At this time, we will call to order our Board of Education Work Session. The first item on our agenda is our swearing-in ceremony of our newly elected and re-elected members. And I will call Ms. Kara Kapke, our attorney, to the stage.
Let's call you down first, Amy.
Yes, ma'am.
Are you ready to take the oath of office?
Yes.
Okay. Repeat after me. I, Amy Norman.
I, Amy Norman.
solemnly swear or affirm.
solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Of America.
Of America.
The Constitution of the State of Indiana.
The Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And the State of Indiana.
And the State of Indiana.
I will faithfully execute.
I will faithfully execute.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a member of this governing body.
As a member of this governing body.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Will you raise your right hand? Okay. Will you repeat after me? I.
I.
Crystal Puckett.
Crystal Puckett.
solemnly swear or affirm.
I solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Indiana.
The Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
The State of Indiana.
And the State of Indiana.
I will faithfully execute.
I will faithfully execute.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a member of this governing body.
As a member of this governing body.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Newest elected board member. Shayla, would you raise your right hand? Repeat after me. I.
I.
Shayla Mulholland.
Shayla Mulholland.
solemnly swear or affirm.
solemnly swear.
That I will support the United States, the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Indiana.
The Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And the State of Indiana.
And the State of Indiana.
I will faithfully execute.
I will faithfully execute.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a member of this governing body.
As a member of this governing body.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
And at this time, I will ask each of our newly elected members to stand and acknowledge your loved ones who are here with us. So I will start with Dr. Mulholland. Who did you bring with you today?
I would love to acknowledge my family here today. Chris Frazes, Raymond, Bodie, and my parents. Dr. Keith and Lena Mulholland. My brothers, Casey and Leah Mulholland. Casey, they actually attended Craig, those little things. And my sister-in-law Christina. My nieces, Emiko and Aya. And our friends Rita Holverschorn and Emily Trivitt.
Ms. Puckett, would you like to acknowledge your loved ones here today?
Yes, I have quite a few people here. I have my wonderful uncle and Uncle Mike and Aunt Patrice. They are my soft place to land in adulthood. I have my lovely spousal unit, Rob. I have a few kiddos. I have Robert, my wonderful son right there, who stayed just to see me get sworn in and hit the roads, go back to school. And then I have my best friend, Alicia. We were on the Belzer basketball team together. We were horrible. Oh, oh, and two, where do you have the two kids? This is what happens when you have multiple kids. You forget sometimes. We have Abby and Addie. Where are you at?
High honor roll and honor roll recipients.
And I would like to acknowledge my husband, Isaac Norman. My children, Jonah Norman, he's a senior at Lawrence North. Elizabeth Norman, she's a freshman at Lawrence North. And then Eleanor, or Ellie, she comes to a lot of our board meetings. She's at Mary Castle, 4th grade. And then also, I'm very honored to have my parents, my mom and dad, Rich and Suzie Riggle, in the front row with us. They came over from Illinois. My biggest cheerleaders, usually in sports, but now they're here for governance. And my mom was a big influence in me serving in this role. She was a 33-year educator in the state of Illinois, and she also served a term on the board. So, thank you, guys, for all coming. Now, board, at this time, we will per our policy 0154. We are annually required to reorganize through our officers and our committees for the Board of Education. All right. And I am a yellow belt at this, to use martial arts terms. I promise I will be a little bit smoother as we go on, but I'm going to go ahead now and start the procedures. So, at this time, we will start with the election of our officers. I'm going to open up the floor for nomination for the Office of Board President. I nominate. Anybody can nominate, and any member can also self-nominate.
I nominate Amy Norman as Board President.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
A second.
Or no.
A second.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. Thank you, board. Are there any other nominations at this time for President of the Board of Education? Okay, no nominations, no second nominations. At this time, I will move it to a votes. Board, all in favor of myself, Amy Norman, as Board President, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, say nay. Okay. Thank you, board. And normally, if it were someone else, I would say, "Do you accept this role?" And so, I accept on behalf of the board, the role of President of our school board. So, thank you, board. And now, we will close the President role, and I will open up election of Vice President at this time. So, I'm opening up the floor, board, for nominations for the role of Vice President.
I nominate Crystal Puckett.
Second?
Second.
Okay. So, it's moved and seconded. Are there any other nominations for the role of Vice President on the school board? Okay, at this time, we will move to a vote board. All in favor of Crystal Puckett for Vice President of the school board, say aye.
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 Aye. Yeah, we all get a vote on ourselves. And then, any opposed, nay? Okay, that has passed five to zero. Thank you, board. Crystal Puckett, do you accept the role of Vice President of the school board?
I graciously accept. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. All right, board, at this time, we will move to the Office of Secretary of the Board of Education. I will open up the floor now for nominations for Secretary.
I nominate Jessica Dunn for Secretary.
Second.
I nominate Dr. Shayla Mulholland.
Second.
Okay. So, at this time, board, we have a nomination and a second for both Ms. Dunn and Dr. Shayla Mulholland. At this time, I will go ahead and take a vote. So, all in favor of Ms. Dunn for Board Secretary, say aye.
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 And then, all opposed, say nay? We have to do a vote?
So then, it would be aye.
Okay. Okay, nay?
Or Dr..
Okay. And then, at this time, okay, that is a two to three vote. Two nays, three ayes. And then, at this time, we will do a vote on Ms., or Dr. Shayla Mulholland for Board Secretary. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay?
Nay.
Okay. Thank you, board. Dr. Mulholland, do you accept this nomination as Board Secretary?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you, board, for this nomination. And just a reminder to the public, while we serve four-year terms on the Board of Education, our annual reorganization is done yearly, and so, I just wanted to remind the public of that. I thank everyone for their input, and I look forward to serving with each and every member of this board. We all have an equal vote and equal input, so thank you for that. Now, oh, yes, and now, at this time, we're going to take a really short pause. Ms. Blankenship will reorganize our seats. I also wanted to make an announcement to anybody. We're going to start moving into the business portion of our meeting. So, for our loved ones who came, you're welcome to stay for the riveting part of our business, or if you'd like to slip out now, this would probably be a good transition time. So, thank you all again for your support. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, thank you. While we're doing this, too, one thing that Ms. Lawrence had said that we've done before is to do a quick family photo for all the new members, or the really recently re-elected members. So, while we're doing this, Dr. Mulholland, if you want to bring your family up and do a nice picture, if you can, then we'll follow by Ms. Puckett and then myself.
We're going to bring everybody. You guys are going to be front and center. Little do. We're going to have, so look where I'm standing, right here, this is where you're going to be. You want to come around to you? There she is. Oh, come on. And then, I'll be. Center of you with the logo, so if you could all take. Two steps to your left. Little bit more. Little bit more. One more step to your left. You guys are good. I'm going to have you three take a step. You three. A little more, a little bit more. Perfect, perfect, perfect. That's perfect. All right, nice and high. All right, one, two, three, I'm going to take a few. Congratulations.
Thank you. It's a big family.
It's many kids, it's good.
It's wonderful.
All right, take a couple steps to the left, couple steps to the left, or a couple steps. One more, one more big one. There we go. That's perfect. All right. One, two, three, I'm going to take a couple. Congratulations. And Riggle Norman.
If the Riggle Norman family would like to join me. Tell us where to go.
Right in front. Seems to head this way. I'm trying to center. You're in a great spot. You're in a great spot.
All people.
So, I want someone right here.
Okay.
Right here, there we go.
Okay.
We're good.
All right. Oh, it was great. All right. One, two, three.
All right, thank you. Anyone who's been in this role knows that our families are part of this journey with us, and we can't do it without their support. And we all are parents, so this was a good family event, so thank you for that. Now, we will move into the next portion of the session. Yes, we've got to do our appointment of our financial officers at this time. Let me pull up my notes. Our next point of view, our next point is the appointment of our financial leadership. Dr. Smith, on your recommendation, we will be appointing Mr. Matt Miles, Chief Financial Officer, the Purchasing Agent and Treasurer of the district. Do you accept Mr. Miles?
Yes.
I do.
Okay, thank you.
He doesn't have any choice.
All right, and secondly, Renee Hall will be the, we appoint you as Deputy Treasurer. Is Renee here?
No.
Okay.
She speaks for her.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir. All right, so now, we move on to our board-appointed committee members. These are definitely great community outreach committees that we do as a board with our different organizations. So, at this time, as Acting President, I appoint Ms. Jessica Dunn, or to the Lawrence Parks and Recreation Board. Do you accept, Ms. Dunn?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, secondly, I am going to appoint Dr. Shayla Mulholland to the Lawrence Township Foundation Board. Do you accept?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. And then, finally, the liaison to the Indiana School Board Association, Ms. Marta Lawrence. Do you accept?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, and now, I'll move to Dr. Smith for the superintendent-appointed committee memberships.
Well, as you know, board, each of you are responsible for policy, but taking the lead on that, we're going to ask one of our senior board members, and Crystal Puckett, to serve this term, and we thank Ms. Dunn for doing her term. It comes around quickly every year, and so, Crystal Puckett will serve in that capacity. Madam President, on the legislative side, because of the uniqueness in our state, the state legislature meets every year, we're in a long session. Next year will be a short session, it feels like we're always in session. It requires the work of the entire Board of Education to serve in that, so the community needs to know that your Board of Education is strongly connected to our state legislators in and out of our community, as we will work very hard on policies that will benefit our children, in particular, the finances that we need in order to run our school corporation. So, all of you, board, will be in meetings with your legislators. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. We accept. All right. That is, that's the end of that portion now. And now, we will move on to number four, our information items. Mr. Roger Smith, Blue Ribbon Facilities Update.
Madam President, Dr. Smith, members of the board. Belzer Middle School, we did demo the band room, and that is going back together, going on ground level for ADA compliance. The kitchen, we completely demolished the kitchen over winter break, and that'll be put back together this semester. The next slide shows the two new serving lines that I've been showing you all along. Those are put back into use and using those as temporary serving lines with one in the cafeteria. Fall Creek Valley hallways, we continue on with there. The main commons area is really moving forward, the ceiling's completed, they're working on the walls, and next then will be the flooring. The auditorium, we expect to turn that back over to the building the end of next week, and the flooring going in, sound and lighting will then finish the auditorium. Cafe wall expansion, we added a wall on the outside where the blue is there, or purple. And then, the next slide shows you the inside that we will remove to expand the cafeteria. New LACC brickwork, if you notice a lot of plastic up around the building, we're trying to keep it warm to continue on with the brickwork. Exterior walls continue on the south end. New roof, actually, they were up there last week and this week, shoveling snow off, so we can continue that work. The second floor, they're on the second floor, building out the walls, and MEP, Mechanical, Electrical, and Plumbing are continuing.
All right, thank you, Mr. Smith. Board, do you have any questions or comments? Ms. Dunn?
I have one quick question. First of all, outstanding work, especially the LACC, it's certainly coming along very rapidly. They're doing a fantastic job. Just out of curiosity, wondering how, with the Belzer kitchen renovation, how is food being prepared for students? Is that being prepared in another site?
Yeah, we satellite that in. We always do this during renovations, because the summer months are too short, so we usually start spring break. In this case, we have to start winter break to be done before the start of school. All the food satellite is in from LC.
All right, question, thank you very much. Yes, go ahead, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Smith, I've heard from several parents that some water fountains in Lawrence North are not operating, and since I'm a Lawrence North parent now, I'm curious, is there a formal mechanism by which parents can make facilities aware of those sort of things, or what's the best way for members of the public to, they're experiencing these stories?
Really talk with the building principal in there. We have a form and a process for them to submit, and most of them are submitted in our work order system.
Thank you so much. Thank you for the question. Board, any other questions or comments? Okay, I do have one question, Mr. Smith. The LACC is coming along great, and again, just for the public's knowledge, the goal, we're still on schedule for the administration and programs to move into the new LACC in the summer, is that correct?
The plan is to, first part of June, to move into the new LACC, C-building, and vacate this one for renovation in June as well.
Okay, thank you. All right, board, we will move on to 4.2, Request for the Bids of Crestview Elementary Plans and Specifications. Mr. Roger Smith?
The next four items I have are projects that will be requesting the board-approved plans and specifications that will allow us to go out to bid. Our first presentation is Crestview Elementary, and in this classroom addition, we will, we got a new addition, a four-room classroom, go back up to the previous one there. On the left side is a new addition attached to the western end of the building, and there will be four classrooms, two office areas, and a gang restroom going in that area. And also, we will be doing, as you move on to the next slide, it's about a 7,000 square foot building that we're going to add on, and we also have some other areas within the building that we will be updating. Also, a new playground, hard surface area on the playground, and new ADA compliant sidewalks to the playground.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Board, are there any questions? Okay, we will move on now, Mr. Smith, to the request for bids on Forest Glen Plans and Specifications.
Again, it is a room addition going on, Forest Glen. We are adding six classrooms. You'll notice it on the lower right-hand side, and also, the orange area and the green area is the playground and the soccer area that will be affecting the site. And also, the blue line in the middle is a little bit of separation in the parking lot that will help us with traffic flow. Next slide, it is a top aerial view. We have a green space there on that southwest corner of the building, which where the addition will go in. And the next slide is a rendering of what that may look like when we're done.
Thank you for that, Mr. Smith. Board, any questions regarding Forest Glen?
Do you have a question? What is the intent? Who will be in these classrooms?
These here areas have been dedicated to the preschool and the kindergarten. We could put equipment specifically for the preschool classes. We got them all together. They're coming in that side of the building, so the logistics made it well for the building to kind of establish those being for pre and kindergarten.
That makes me think, Dr. Smith, given that this space will be for the younger children, has there been any conversation about potentially having, like, the LACCs have their own building leaders, since it's integrated into Forest Glen? Has there been any thought of having, since it is, will be its own space, their own administrator for that small? Okay.
Board, any other questions?
I do have one other question. Mr. Smith, will this eliminate the need for us to have portables for students?
Yes. We'll take the condos away.
It's what I hear often, Dr. Smith, that's why I'm asking.
Yes. We will be able to remove the portables upon completion of this addition.
Great news, thank you.
Thank you for those questions, board. Anyone else have questions regarding Forest Glen? I do have a question slash comment. Dr. Smith, and or Mr. Smith, maybe, just for the public, to give us a historical lesson again about when we started bringing students in from preschool, about how many years ago? What's that?
Go ahead, Ms. LePant, because you are the expert of experts, because she oversees that for us.
Yes, we are, I think, four to five years in. There was a grant that we received that allowed us to start immersion preschool, and so, we started at Forest Glen and at Skiles Test, and it's been wildly popular.
Thank you for that historical background, it's just helpful, I know, because a lot of people in the community many times know about the ELCs, and you, the district does a great job of advertising, but it's just helpful to know the expansion, so thank you for that. Board, if there are no more questions, we will move on to 4.4, Request for Bids for the Mary Castle Elementary Plans and Specifications. Mr. Smith?
Mary Castle, Class Four Classroom Expansion onto Mary Castle, just a little history there, too. In '17, we added four classrooms within the four walls when we renovated, and the growth has continued to expand, and therefore, the request to add additional classrooms, we just put on two portables out back to help alleviate that for the next year and a half. So, there on the left, we'll be on the southwest corner of the building, on the front, where the new addition will occur. Again, a 5,000 square foot addition going on, with some attention within the building as well. And also, playground, we'll be doing the hard surface, resurfacing of their existing playground. The other playground was new in '17. You'll see the four classrooms, it's similar to the way the building was previously designed and set up to make another quad for that particular building. Again, that shows you the lower left end is where the addition goes. The top gray square, gray square area is where we'll resurface for their playground.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Board, any questions regarding Mary Castle?
I do, since this is a site where we are just beginning to add the portables to, I know that many of the families at Forest Glen have asked me specifically about security and warmth and access and things to portables, so, Mr. Smith, if you could just explain how we manage our portables for members of the public who may be interested or may have students in them for the first time.
We do keep them locked all day, and they have access through their key system to go in and out. We also have our camera systems posted on both sides of the cameras, so we do have full visibility, both in the playground, around the portables in the building. Fire and PA system is also tied into the portables as well.
Mr. Smith, due to the uniqueness of Mary Castle being a neighborhood school, will you explain to the Board of Education the location and access to the community, to the neighborhood, because this is a unique school?
It is. We do have a walking path, as you see on the addition, go back to that original one, down, 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 last one, right there. You see the new addition, there's a walking path currently right there that goes into that addition, and also splits and has an easement that goes all the way into. that goes into that addition and also splits and has an easement that goes all the way into the sidewalks for the addition. We do have walkers to this building, and we may have to alter that for a little time through this renovation, but then it will be rebuilt and established back for full access from that addition to the school.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And to go along, you had already said it, but I just wanted to reiterate, the portables will be up for around one and a half years, correct?
We're hoping just over a year. If we start this summer, then the next fall, they should be ready to move into. So, just a little over a year.
Okay, thank you. Board, any other questions regarding Mary Castle? Okay, we will move on now to the request for bids for the Craig Phase Two renovations. Mr. Smith?
Again, full renovation of Craig Internal Building. As you recall, Phase One, we did a lot of external roof and site work in this building. And now that Craig Academy is moving forward, then renovating this building to put back for student use. We do, we are going to do some site where number one is, we were going to make that lower-level ADA compliant. Right now, it's just concrete steps going in there, and that's a lower level that accesses both, or actually, all three gyms and the cafeteria, and we want to make it ADA accessible. Floor plan, floor plan, you have seen this before, but anyway, lower level is LAA. We do have some special needs area, leap area, and then also, the back half will be community involvement in those locations. We will be keeping the professional development area as well as this current board area. This next level is the second level, where the classrooms will all be renovated to accommodate student use. And we'll also add a stairway in the middle for easier access down to the lower level to the cafeteria. And then the bottom level, where the gyms and cafeteria, we will be putting a brand-new kitchen in there to accommodate the needs of the student in this building.
All right, thank you.
I would.
Oh, sorry, do I have to add?
I would like to kind of go back and just recognize, we do have a team that's helping us do this, going through each of our renovations with Crestview, that is Schmidt and Associates. And then with Schmidt and Associates, on Crestville, we have Davis for the CMC. Gary Edmonds here, and Scott Sexton that are helping us put that together. Forrest Glen Ratio is the architect. Again, these are the architects that did the previous renovations, so bringing them back on with us as a partner to finish this out. Scott Hunt's here, and Core and Garcia are the CMC, and Remo Mizetta is here with Core and Garcia. Mary Castle, again, Schmidt and Associates, Jen Carroll, the architect, and then Powers and Sons. Mammon Powers is here with Dustin Thoman, will be overseeing the build-out of that project. Penny and Howie, Mike Schiff, and Dennis Bane, architects for Penny and Howie. Again, Powers and Sons will be helping us with that build-out as a CMC, with Mammon and Dustin present again. So, we want to thank them as a true partner working with us on these projects.
Thank you for that acknowledgement, and thank you, everyone, for your work, current and future. Board, are there any questions regarding Craig?
I do have some questions. And Mr. Miles, this may be a better question for you as it relates to Craig, but also the other renovations. How is this paid for across fiscal years? And where do expenses hit? As we don't plan to have students in Craig until 2027. I'm curious how the financing works for each of these different renovations.
Yes, happy to answer those questions. As far as the construction financing for Craig, that is part of our already approved, pre-approved by the board, $90 million financing project that was approved in fall of 2023. So, as the construction moves into the next step, we will be using, taking future bond dollars out for those, to finance those projects. Operational costs and things are there what they are now. Those will obviously change during the course of construction, and then once we get going again, we'll have students in the building to support that.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. Board, are there any other questions regarding Craig? Okay, we will move on now to the school resolution. Mr. Matt Miles?
Thank you, Madam President, Dr. Smith, members of the board. Our next item up for, on the agenda tonight for AMPO and then later for Action relates to the financing of several of the projects that Mr. Smith was just referring to outside of the Craig project. This is referring to our elementary expansions as well as our guaranteed energy savings contracts, which were both previously heard by the board and passed in our 1028 hearings. This passed in late 2024. And this is a resolution for the Board of Education of the Metropolitan School District of Lawrence Township, taking actions regarding the proposed First Amendment to lease and approving the issuance of bonds by the school corporation, building, school building corporation of Lawrence Township and matters related thereto. With me tonight here is Hannah Clendini, and she is from Barnes &amp; Thornburg, our legal bond counsel. Hannah is here to answer any questions that I don't touch on, or the board may want to hear additional information. But the resolution mirrors the language that you saw improved once again in the 1028. Again, it's for our 2025 through 27 elementary school expansion, renovation, and energy conservation projects. In short, it is to finance, it's the next step in the financing process for Crestview, Harrison Hill, Indian Creek, and Skiles Test for our HVAC upgrades as well as roofing projects. And this step follows the 30-day petition and remonstrance waiting period that we did not get any action taken by the community, so we've passed that 30 days. Now, we are ready to pass this resolution. The next step would come in late February at a public hearing by the Board of Education and action as well by our building corporation to basically approve the bond issuance. So, we anticipate, again, that public hearing in February. This project would be tax rate neutral, so that's always a key thing to share as we move forward, again, with this construction. And hopefully, I've touched on everything, Hannah. So, if we, if the board does have questions, we'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you, Mr. Miles. Board, questions?
I do, yes. What energy conservation measures are being utilized? And how do we see these savings being reflected long-term?
Mr. Smith, would you like to touch on that?
On the guaranteed energy savings side, as a result of new equipment, new controls, we're going to have less labor and fix and repair costs. And also, the new parts going in are energy efficient. So, we will also have energy savings, savings on top of that.
Thank you for that. And then can you also just remind the public on what it, can you define tax rate neutral, please?
I'm looking at Mr. Smith, and that's a question for me. Tax rate neutral, in short, means that this is not going to be an increase to property taxes.
Can you expand, then, on how that's being paid for, just for members of the public, please?
Sure. And Ms. Clendini, if I, I'll take it, and you can jump in if need be. But so, again, we will issue those bonds this spring. We will go through a bond rating process. Prior to our last bonds that we sold occurred last fall, we were actually able to get a rate of 3.11% interest, and those will be a maximum 20-year bond at a maximum rate in the, the language says up to 6%. We are extremely conservative in that, and we expect to get a much better rate than that.
Since they are 20 years in nature, it may be difficult if the tax, for example, if things were happening in the state legislator, with our state legislators, where perhaps the district is not getting as much funding, there could be a tax increase. Not, we're not anticipating it this year or the next year, but there could be over the 20 years of the bonds, potentially tax increases. Would that be safe to say?
Our, so our, this would tie to our debt service tax rate, and once we pass that, it is locked in at that point. And Ms. Clendini can certainly jump in if need be, but that should not, as it relates to this project, it's kind of like locking in your rate on your home. You're locked in, and the bond rate associated with it would be, would be tied to that. If there are future projects fall off, our debt service rate could ebb and flow over the years, you know, based on debt either coming on or going off of, of our debt structure. I'm not sure if that answered your question.
Right, but there will never be a time when this, when the district would need to go to taxpayers to pay for this, is what you're saying.
Correct. Correct. Sorry if I didn't answer that easier. Yeah, correct.
Thank you. Good questions, board. Are there any other questions at this time?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Miles. At this time, we will move to our action items. I will go to action item 5.1, approval of school resolution, resolution of the board on the proposed First Amendment to lease and approving the issuance of bonds. Mr. Matt Miles?
Thank you. Once again, Madam President, at this time, I recommend that the board approve the resolution as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it has been moved and properly seconded. All right, board, are we ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. All right, thank you, Mr. Miles. Now, we will move on to the approval of requests for bids for Crestview Elementary Plans and Specifications. Mr. Roger Smith?
Madam President, Dr. Smith, members of the board, recommend the board approve the plans and specifications for Crestview Elementary Classroom Edition Project to go out to visit, to go out to bid as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All right, properly moved and seconded. All right, board, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right. We will move on now, again, Mr. Smith, to the approval of bids for Forrest Glen Elementary.
Madam President, Dr. Smith, members of the board, recommend the board approve the plans and specifications for Forrest Glen Elementary Classroom Edition Project as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, board. At this time, we'll go ahead and make a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, all ayes, no nays. All right, at this time, we will now move to the request for bids for Mary Castle Elementary. Mr. Smith?
Madam President, Dr. Smith, members of the board, recommend the board approve the plans and specifications for Mary Castle Elementary Classroom Edition Project as submitted.
So moved.
Second.
All right, properly moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, the ayes have it. Now, we will move on to action, or to our item 5.5, approval of requests for bids for the Craig Phase Two renovations. Mr. Roger Smith?
Madam President, Dr. Smith, members of the board, recommend the board approve the plans and specifications for Craig Phase Two renovation project as presented.
So moved.
Do we have a second? Okay, properly moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, aye. All opposed, say nay. All right, all ayes. Thank you, board. Now, we will move on to the approval of the personnel reports. Ms. Carla Johnson?
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Smith, and members of the board. We'd like to request approval of the personnel report as submitted.
All right, do I have a motion?
So moved.
All right, Jessica, Ms. Dunn, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, properly moved and seconded. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the ayes have it. All right, board, we have conducted our business, and now at this time, we will go to our administrator and board comments. Would anyone like to go first?
I can go ahead and go.
Ms. Puckett?
All right, I am presenting for the last time, as I will pass this time to, this is done. From the board, we have the Young Entrepreneurs. This is from ages five to 17. This is for our young leaders who have a chance to learn and develop their marketing skills, their sales, and customer services takes place. They still have two more, January 18th and February 15th. This is at Lawrence Community Park from 10 to 1. We also have a few more dates for our winter market. That's on select Thursdays from 4 to 7, also at the community center. You can go to thecityoflawrence.org for the additional dates for that. And also, for our wonderful seniors, we have the Golden Hour Game Days. This is at, on Thursdays, again, at the Lawrence Community Center from 11 to noon on Thursdays. So, that is from the parks.
Well, thank you, Ms. Puckett. Just a point of clarification, and I've done this before myself. We actually do our committee reports at the, at the monthly meeting the second time of the month.
Did I just mess up?
No, it's okay.
That was.
No, because now the, now the community knows what's going on in the city of Lawrence. No, no, I, I, I want to go to that stuff. No, and I've done that myself. No, but thank you for that. And then if you have any, like, our personal, you know, board comments at this time, I'm opening up the floor. Otherwise, I'll call in people. So, anybody have a comment?
I have no comments, other than thank you, everybody. I'm excited for another year. This is going to be an exciting year, and I look forward to it. I, thank you. It's always been an honor. And yeah, looking forward to the work. It's going to be an interesting year.
All right. Ms. Dunn, do you have any comments at this time?
I think.
Ms. Lawrence?
Excited to work with all of you in the coming year. It's going to be great. One thing I do want to call out and shout out, all of our facilities, people who have been shoveling snow and dumping salt and making sure our kids and staff and teachers can get inside and outside of buildings safely. It is not easy work, and it is sometimes work that does not go recognized. So, Mr. Smith, please extend that heartfelt thank you. Also, to our bus drivers, who every day open the door in sometimes very frigid temperatures to a child who's been standing at a bus stop, also in very frigid temperatures. So, shout out to those bus drivers who get that wind in their face each and every day.
Thank you for that, Ms. Lawrence. Dr. Mahalid?
Yes, just super grateful for the welcome, the onboarding experience with all of you, to orient me to the board, and just the welcome, and grateful to have my family and friends out today. I'm looking forward to the work ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Mahalid. I just have a quote. One of my sorority sisters was recently chosen as the Georgia Teacher of the Year, and she said, to quote, "As leaders, our job isn't to represent one voice. Our job is to represent the voice of others, the people who aren't always in the room." And, and when we talk about intersectionality, I see this with our board, that we are all here to represent those who do not have the privilege to be in this room. And I really look forward to serving with each and every one of you. I thank you for our staff, our teachers, our administration, everybody, and most importantly, the kids. We, another point of intersectionality is, we're all parents, and that really personalizes the work that we do. And I just wanted to say thank you, and we look forward, as a governing body, to serving our community this year. Dr. Smith?
Madam President and board, there's often, you don't get thank yous, but you make decisions, and you have decisions on the shoulders of other board members. We made a decision several years ago, Roger Smith, to build our swimming pools. Grand Esprit, go to the mic and share what happened. Because of building nice facilities, we were able to do something this past weekend we haven't been able to do in many years. We've got a brand-new swimming pool at Lawrence North High School. What happened?
We do, and we hosted MEC championships, and one of our teams didn't win MEC championship. Lawrence North won that. So, it's pretty exciting to be able to host that and have it here. We also hosted some collegiate teams. University of Michigan came and practiced at LC. And that's a pretty neat thing for high school kids, get to watch a tier-one Big Ten, you know, high-level swim, swim program.
you know, high-level swim, swim program. And I'll just go ahead and keep going. You know, when the Olympics came, the Olympic trials came, we were the practice site for several major clubs and universities to come in. And that's just, we can't take for granted that, what a neat experience for a 14- to 18-year-old to get to watch the highest level, watch future Olympians as they train and get to see that. So, we get a lot of accolades on our aquatic facilities and our facilities as a whole across the Board, particularly the athletic arena.
So, congratulations. And my last statement, since we are in the season of snow, it's normal, parents. We're okay, and it will be cold. And Roger Smith and his team will be out to make sure we shovel out. But I want to remind people, we still have a long way to go with winter, so we'll be ready for you. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Smith. Thank you, Board. Happy 2025 again. Our next Board meeting, our monthly Board meeting, will be January 27th here at 7:00 PM. At this time, I will take a motion to adjourn the meeting. So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, at this time, we will gavel out. Thank you.